That's one of the biggest complaints people are talking about when they're watching us on YouTube, that we forget to turn our mics on. Mostly the council and planning board, not us. Okay, if you're here for Bell Avenue, that's not going to be heard tonight. And if you're here for Gaston Avenue, that's not going to be heard tonight. That'll probably be pushed off sometime around July, unless they want to have a special meeting. So if you're here for Bell Avenue, that will not be heard. Or via more on North Gaston Avenue Shell Station. Good evening. The meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been done on January 15th, 2025. A copy of the notice specifying the daytime and location was posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, given to the clerk administrator, mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier News, placed on the Borough website. These proceedings are also being televised. These proceedings are of judicial nature. Proper judicial decorum will be maintained, only those items on the agenda will be heard. If any, as I said, if any member believes this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, please state your views at this time. Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair.
Here.
Ed Allot.
Here.
Roberta Carpenetz.
Morgan McLaughlin.
Here.
Rich O'Neil.
Brian Budemski.
John Flores.
Here.
Eric Alvarez.
Here.
And Stuart Daniels is excused.
Alright. Are there any conflicts tonight? Nobody else recuse themselves? Okay, fine. Next item, pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to and all for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay. Someone like to move for the approval of the minutes for January and February meetings?
So moved.
Move the second. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Chairman Adair.
Yes.
Ed Allot.
Yes.
Roberta Carpenetz.
Okay, I'm abstaining from January 15th because I wasn't present, but I'm voting yes for February 5th.
Understood. Morgan McLaughlin.
Yes.
Rich O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Budemski.
Yes.
John Flores.
Yes.
Eric Alvarez.
I believe I can vote for the January meeting, but not the February meeting, so yes.
Carried with those notations. Okay, we have no resolutions? Applications? I had mentioned that Bell Avenue was not on our agenda tonight, and we don't know when it's going to be. And Gaston Avenue, 131 Gaston Avenue, is not going to be heard tonight. And we're not sure when that's going to be. So if you're here for those two applications, they won't be heard. Okay, we have 281 North Bridge Street. Good evening.
Good evening. Please enter your appearance. Joseph Riccardi.
Address?
281 North Bridge Street, Somerville, New Jersey.
Spell your last name, please. Mr. Riccardi, you appearing pro se, or do you have other people that are going to be here?
No, I am appearing pro se.
Okay, I'd like to... Would you please stand and raise your right hand? You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so hope you got it.
Yes.
Please state your name, spell your last name for the record.
Joseph Riccardi, R.I.C.C.A.R.D.I.
Thank you, sir, welcome. Mr. Riccardi, tell us what you want to do.
So, my wife and I have lived in Somerville for a little over seven years now. And we really love the town and we want to stay. So, in doing so, we have felt that our best option is to expand our current home. We currently have a one and a half story on North Bridge Street consisting of two bedrooms, one bathroom, a kitchen, a living room, an unfinished basement with a crawl space, as well as a walk-up attic. We would like to expand the house by adding a second floor to the house. That would allow us to add three bedrooms, as well as two full baths upstairs, and a laundry room, as well as another living space on the front of the home. And also, in the process, we would like to renovate the first floor so that we would convert the existing single, two-bedroom, single bath with the kitchen and living room into a one-bedroom with a full bath, a kitchen, living room, and dining room downstairs, and a mudroom.
And then close the porch, right, addition on the front?
Yeah, the addition, the added living space on the front would come over the front porch.
The second floor had the family room above the porch, right?
Yes, correct.
So what variances are you seeking?
We are currently seeking a C variance, as the house is existing non-conforming with the front yard setback on Wilmer Ave.
Is that correct, Mr.?
Yeah, it's correct. I follow up that the first floor is an open floor plan is what the applicant's proposing. The dining room, living room, kitchen's open.
Yup.
And it looks like it's a full facade renovation. The windows are going to be all redone?
Yup, we would do a full renovation of the facade to match. This way, we would redo the siding, bring all of the current insulation up to current code. We would update all of that to make sure it matches from the first floor, second floor attic, so that that is all up to the current state code, as well as the windows and, as I said, siding.
I just want to mention to the board that I reviewed the notice provided by the applicant, and it was sufficient as the form and content. Therefore, the board can exercise jurisdiction over the application.
The basement, is that going to be finished or late?
No, the basement, if you look at the plan, the existing floor plan, the basement is only under the front living room, and is currently unfinished, and is only about six feet high. So it will remain unfinished, and as basically to house utilities.
And the attic will be?
The attic, on the plans in the hallway upstairs, there's a pull-down. So the attic will remain unfinished and just be used for storage.
The dwelling's pretty far off, 150 feet, 100 feet, or off of North Bridge. It sets back.
Yeah, it sets back pretty far.
And it's, in my opinion, it's well done, the sidewalks are in good shape, some mature trees in the front. I had some comments about the side street, Wilmer, doesn't have sidewalks, but it dead ends.
Right.
I don't think it's ever had sidewalks.
I don't believe so.
So there's a waiver for sidewalks, and obviously, if the road doesn't go anywhere. I think that's the, should the board grant approval, that'd be one of the bases for not putting the sidewalk in.
Hey, Art, why don't we curtail this conversation? Because it's an idiotic thing. I mean, this is a perfect plan in a street that nobody goes through. Nobody even knows the house is there. I mean, and you know, the plan is a real improvement.
I think we do have to give him the opportunity to say everything, in case somebody wants to appeal it.
Yeah, let him say it, but why don't we just listen? Because...
If I could, I'd go for it right now. Is that it, sir?
Uh, yes.
Anyone in the audience have any comments on Mr. Riccardi's application? Or would he just... Anybody from the board?
Yeah, I'm familiar with the lot, because back in my fire chief days, I dumped a boat, a load of burning garbage on that street, and I caught a lot of nonsense. So I know right where he is.
Anybody else? Anyone have any comments? Anybody from the board have any comments?
Yeah, I like it.
We're easy. He's a newcomer to town, so...
Keep him coming.
Do you have a garage on your property anywhere?
There's a three-car garage that's detached. It's detailed on the, I think on Z1, at the very back of the lot.
Other it is.
I'm sorry, yes.
I see it.
Yeah, it's at the very back of the lot.
Wow, hey, moving on up. Got to match the house with the garage. Mr. Chairman? Yes. May I make a suggestion that the, that whatever the board might decide, that compliance with Mr. Cole's report be a condition of approval? Yes. Well, definitely. Would someone like to close the public portion of this application?
I'll move.
Move? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Board, what's your position?
Chairman Adair.
No, it's just comments, huh?
Somebody's got to move that we approve it.
I'll move that we approve it, because it makes a lot of sense, which most of the world today doesn't. I mean, this guy is doing it right, let's get out of his way.
Yes, really. Move, second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, there has to be a voice vote, I'm sorry.
Roll call. Chairman Adair.
Yes.
Ed Allot.
Yes.
Roberta Carpenetz.
Yes.
Morgan McLaughlin.
Yes.
Rich O'Neil.
Yes.
Brian Budemski.
Yes.
John Flores.
Yes.
Eric Alvarez.
Yes.
Carried. Thank you, Mr.? Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
I'll prepare a resolution for adoption by the board, and we'll, I anticipate that this will be at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening. It's been a really good day. Okay, next one. 188.
Right, nice one.
High Street. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Michael Silbaji from Labor, Silbaji &amp; Cohen. On behalf of the applicant, 188 West High LLC. This is a, an application that you have jurisdiction over to hear appeals from decisions rendered by administrative officers in the town. This is a property, I think you all know where it is, 188 West High. Name kind of gives it away. But it was purchased by the same group, I've been before you before, the group that builds and develops properties for group homes. Now, the two prior applications we were here were commercial buildings that were going to be returned back to residential dwellings for group homes. This one was purchased, and it was being used, and by all public records, it appears that it's been used as a residence for many years. The structure itself was built in 1892, according to public records that are available. Property is Lot 9 and Block 132. So after it was purchased, the applicant applied for a building permit to renovate one of the bathrooms. And importantly, the property, when it was listed for sale, was listed as having five bedrooms and two baths. The applicant under, and it's licensed, the applicant is licensed by the Division of Developmental Disabilities, and the licensing there only goes for four bedrooms. So, they bought five, all five were located on the second floor, and they were going to decommission one of the bedrooms and make it an office, and then the four were made on the second floor. The bathroom on the second floor, the idea was to remodel it, make it a little more usable for this population. And, you know, that led to the filing of a building permit, which was done. And then the, as part of that process, the zoning officer gets involved as well. And the zoning officer in December came out and said that, you know, it needed a change of use. And we had argued that, under Section 66.1 of the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, group homes for people with developmental disabilities, as well as people with head injuries, and there's a whole list of other special groups, are to be treated the equivalent or the same as the word that's used in the statute. That's not me.
It's not me.
I was hoping it was maybe for a little effect, but it didn't come off that way. So, that they're to be treated the same as a single-family residence, provided that single-family residences are allowed in the zone. It just so happens that this property is in the PO, AR zone, where single-family residences are allowed. So, the idea behind the statute, which was first promulgated in 1978, was an effort to minimize or eliminate discrimination for group homes with, you know, people with developmental disabilities. And I can, I'm old enough to say, I remember that back then, that, you know, people with developmental disabilities, I mean, there was, you know, you know, I mean, we think back on it, and they were called retarded. And now that word is looked at with disdain, and rightly so. So, the ordinance, or the statute, back in 78, was allow group homes, if you received a conditional permit for it. And that seemed to kind of help a little bit. But then eventually, the federal government got involved, and they adopted, and I think it was in the 90s, there was the Fair Housing Amendment Act. And the idea that the federal legislation was to really eliminate any distinction between a group home and a single-family home. Because even though New Jersey had a conditional permit that was required, it's still, you know, mandated, you go in front of a public hearing, and you'd have to make your presentation. And, you know, I kind of cut my teeth early enough, and again, I'm old enough to say that, when you still had the conditional permit. And, you know, there was, I mean, some of it was just public misinformation or misconceptions about this population. And it was still very difficult to get it. And I, I've served on the ARC Board in Warren County for years, abilities, I coached Special Olympics. So, this population has been always kind of close to my heart, because I've worked with them for years in different capacities. So, what had happened was, after the Fair Housing Amendment went into effect, there were a couple lawsuits that were brought in New Jersey, in the federal courts. And the federal court struck the requirement that there be a conditional permit. And the idea behind that was, again, to level the playing field and treat a group home no differently than you would a single-family. Again, provided that the single-family home was allowed in that zone. So, we pushed back, knowing that kind of history and that legislative history. We had pushed back, and the zoning officer, at that point in mid-December, had agreed. So then, the building permit presumably was continued to be processed, and then sometime in January, there was a site inspection. And at the site inspection, there were issues raised about the number of stories in the building, and, you know, whether it was two and a half story, three story. And it ultimately led to another denial of the zoning permit. And, you know, there were issues raised that we needed to go out and get these variances. Now, we appealed it, and the basis for the appeal is, again, kind of goes back to what we had talked about before, that this is to be treated as a single-family. If any of you purchased this property, and let's assume you purchased it for an investment property, and you were going to lease it out to, you know, a family, or, or, you know, four college kids that go to Rutgers, you would not have gone through the same process. You may need a building permit to fix the bathroom, but that would not have necessarily triggered a variance application. Particularly because Somerville had the bright sense, and I think it was 2015, to adopt an ordinance that said, you know, a structure that lawfully existed at the time of the ordinance, you more or less had some of those conditions that were grandfathered in. So, we're here tonight, you know, really on the issue that the zoning officer's decision, we believe, should be rescinded, because we are a single-family home. Albeit, it's a group home, but it is a, it's a use under Section 66.1 that is to be treated the same, same requirements as single-family. And I know Mr. Cole had said in his report, and I apologize, we submitted something, and Mr. Cole, I didn't get your report until late yesterday. So, so I would have much preferred if I had gotten, been able to get it to you ahead of time. So I apologize for that. That, you know, we, again, we're not asking to get away with not having to get a building permit. We're just saying that the change of use and that application process that would be triggered from that, because I know Mr. Cole had also raised about an FAR and all these other things, we are exempt, not because we're a group home, but a single-family would be exempt. And that's what we're the equivalent of. And it all makes sense, I hope, if you appreciate why this Section 66.1 was put into the first place. And it was designed to, you know, absent a compelling government interest that the borough could point to and says, hey, look, you're a group home, you really, we need to give this additional layer of scrutiny. Absent that, the whole reason for the statute was to not discriminate. And I don't, I don't mean that maliciously discriminating. I'm just meaning a disparate treatment between a group home and a single-family. So that the zoning officer's decision should be rescinded, the building permit continued to be processed, and, you know, God willing, they get the building permit and they do the work, four individuals with developmental disabilities can move in there. Very important, too, and again, I, you may not have had a chance to look at it, DDD has already conducted its site inspection, and has signed off on this as being a group home. I included their evaluation, there's some things that we have to do internally. But the structure itself is in compliance with the applicable DDD regulations. So, you know, with the interior work being done, this will be able to provide a home for four individuals with developmental disabilities. And as some of you know who've been there, it's a supervised arrangement. They're not living independently, they're living independently, but there is somebody there 24/7 to maintain, you know, and help the residents. And understanding further that these are, in this population, it's a higher functioning, you know, individual. They're, they're going to have jobs, and they're going to be living much more independently than some people may think of folks with developmental disabilities. So, that's where we are now. I have, we certainly have, I've got three representatives for the company that will be operating the home here. And, you know, I think it's, we can certainly get into, if you had questions about the house and things like that, but I think it's probably more of almost like a, it's almost like a legal argument, a factual issue, I mean, excuse me, a legal argument. But again, we're not afraid to answer questions specifically related to the home for those board members, or even members of the public who may have questions.
I have a few questions. So, you didn't go for a change of use, this is like a UCC R5, right? It's not an R3 or an I4, anything like that?
No, no.
So you're simply an R5. The max residence you're looking at, not including staff, you said four or five?
Four, just four.
So you're still under the, you still have one more you could put in there, correct?
Well, we can't, because the DDD won't allow to have five residents. That's why that fifth bedroom on the second floor will be converted to an office.
So the DDD, is that Department of Health underscore, or is that something else?
The Division of, is it?
It's under DHS.
DHS?
Yeah.
Alright. Now, they, are they making you put sprinklers or alarms in there, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. End. Yeah, the, the report, yeah, so the report has, and again, I don't know if, Ryan, you had a chance to distribute this to everybody? I emailed it. You know what? I made some copies, if you guys want.
The sprinkler requirement comes out of the states.
Yeah, so...
So it's not, that's not a code thing, that's just something they do.
Yeah, they, they give, the state's very helpful, they give you a renovation estimate, it's $128,000 ballpark.
Can't help you there.
Yeah. But it's a new sprinkler system, a fire alarm system with pull, pull stations at each door. The sprinkler piping must be ensofficed in all living areas, railings on the stairs on each side. The exterior railing must be 42 inches high or higher. You have to remove the radiators or put covers, because they created, you know, for this population, a possibility of burns. The front sidewalk will be leveled, they don't want tripping hazards on the front. They, there's, if you guys are familiar with the home, there's that stained glass window. That needs to be insulated or laminated. Then the, the bathroom on the second floor runs into an existing bedroom. That has to be closed off. Obviously, because if you're going to have four people living there, you don't want somebody just to walk right in through a side door, so that, that will be done.
I'm a little confused, did the DDD require to get a zoning permit?
No, no.
So how do we end up, how did he end up with the?
Well, so, just so you know, so what, what happens is, and the process was handled, I mean, so when you file for a building permit, it's also reviewed by your zoning officer.
Not usually for a bathroom. I mean, a bathroom doesn't get zoning review.
But the building permit process, Mr. Cole can certainly expand upon it, and maybe he can explain it better than I. But you're, it's triggered, and I think it's, it's kind of a stopgap measure to make sure that this application that's being presented for a building permit, you know, hasn't slipped through the cracks, and it's, you know, it's an actual permitted use, there's no other outstanding zoning violations related to the property. So that's what it does, and that's true here or in any municipality. To answer your question, and I think there was a, they were doing work without a permit, and that's what triggered the zoning officer's involvement. I could be wrong on that.
Did you say you had copies of your memorandum?
Yeah.
I just, I would like to get a hard copy. One of those old-school guys who likes to read paper. I got this electronically earlier today, so thank you.
Yeah, a lot of it is the exhibits, like the, the review and the report issued by the DDD is seven pages by itself. And, you know, the last two pages goes into what are the required renovations to meet their standards. And candidly, you know, I mean, not only does it help the residents, it also, you know, helps this dwelling going forward. I mean, the radiators probably should be covered, and, you know, the sidewalk should be leveled. So, you know, there is some, some benefit, not only to the homeowners themselves, but even to the neighborhood. You know, for instance, one of the other things they asked for is a whole-house generator, gas generator.
Nice.
Which, yeah. Means the power will never go off. Hasn't gone since I got mine.
No. No, you know what, you're absolutely right. My wife, and my wife hounded me after Sandy, she was on Sandy. And because after that, and then finally I bought it, you know, $3,000 later, I just bought a portal. I mean, I wasn't doing a whole house. I figured, the whole house, I could stay at the Short Hills Hilton, you know, for about a month's worth of power outages. So, but you'll see in there, and then we also included, what triggered the review or the inspection? the inspection by DDD was the owner has to submit a site search request, and that's the first exhibit, and in there, they briefly described the project, and it was noted, purchase five-bedroom, two-full-bathroom home, use it for a four-bedroom group home, this is a two-story, they noted it as a two-story home, unfinished attic and basement, not to be furnished, so neither the attic or the basement will be used. In fact, you'll see in the report, there were some concerns potentially about asbestos, so that has to be done as well, in these older homes, it's not that unusual.
Really good fire stop.
So, so that was, that's what triggered it, and ultimately, if you're in this business, that's how you start, because obviously, you're not going to put down the money to buy this place, I'm going to have the DDD come out after you own it and say, no, this place stinks, we're not going to let you use it for a group home. So it's part of almost like the due diligence process.
Yep.
And, and what's really interesting, you know, and I wish the DEP acted as quickly, so this request went in in June sixth of 2024, and the inspection was done on July second, and part of the reason why is, and if you, if you have any family members that have people with developmental disabilities, not only is there a shortage of housing for, you know, low and moderate income families, but this population as well, because, you know, it's tough, and when parents pass away, and they have adult children with developmental disabilities, it's very overwhelming for them thinking at, when they go, what happens to their sons or daughters. So, New Jersey has been, has been very active in trying to create opportunities for these group homes. The sideline to it, too, is, and I don't know what your overall numbers are, you also get some credits for this for affordable, although there is, I think, Mike, I think there's a limit on that now, they've imposed.
You still get credits, I mean, I, you know, everything is changing about every two days with COA, so.
Yeah, the problem is the affordability controls.
Right.
It's always the problem.
Yeah.
Which is a fancy way of saying deed restriction.
Yeah. Correct, yeah.
You're talking about COA round four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, that, I mean, for, you know, twenty years ago, a lot of homes, and again, I think the state did it to try to encourage municipalities to create it, because you were getting, one bedroom would equal one unit, now that, that has changed, but yeah, but that was, you know, some people, it's the same thing when they did with age restricted, you know, well, give us fifty-five and older, no school kids, we'll take as many of those as we can have, but I don't want to put down that COA rabbit hole.
Mr. Salvaghi, do you know how many group homes we have in town now?
How many overall? I don't know overall, I know this, this organization, this will be their third, so we had twenty-five, West High, this one.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, yeah. West End, yes.
Fire alarm's still going off a lot.
So that would be the three, I suspect, Mr. Chairman, you probably have others scattered throughout the.
I think we do.
Between twelve, between twelve and eighteen.
Yeah.
We were able, when Mayor Holland was in the mayor's seat, were able to make an arrangement with the state of New Jersey to cap.
For the record, would you please?
I was going to say, could you call order and put your name on the record, please?
Yes, Dennis Sullivan, eight South Richards Avenue.
Former mayor Dennis Sullivan.
Thank you, mayor.
We were able to have a representative from the state of New Jersey come to a council meeting and attest to the fact that they agreed with us that we had more than our fair share of group homes. That was between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and three, and I believe at that time, we had twelve. And what triggered that was an application for a property on corner of Cornell Boulevard and near our line, big ranch house, it was proposed for a group home, and we were able to have the state at that time agree that there would be no more group homes. And to my knowledge, a few have opened since then, but it has slowed down, but obviously, people and groups want to be here.
Well, Dennis, one of the things is, we get caught up in the term inherently beneficial use, and it falls under this, okay, it's inherently beneficial use, the use is already, it's approved, now you got to work on the C variances, I think that's why we're here.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing, too, and I don't disagree with your former mayor, one unique thing about this organization is, they're not, they're not a 501(c)(3), a lot of municipalities get very upset when they come in because they're run by the ARCs or Northwest CAP, and they can apply for tax-exempt status because they're a 501(c)(3). This organization will pay taxes just like, you know, it's a single-family home, so, and I know that is not to be a consideration when it comes into zoning, but that's the practical side of it, you know, so.
Will there be veterans in this place?
I know Wendy Mandelbaum has been before you, and she's.
Testifying the past, let me swear her in.
Stand and be sworn.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I'll be God?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Sure, Wendy Mandelbaum, M-A-N-D-E-L-B-A-U-M.
Thank you very much, welcome back.
I don't have to.
Oh, okay.
Wendy, what's your position with?
I'm the executive director for Hudson Hill.
And Hudson Hill is, what's its relationship to 188?
So we will provide services to our group homes, and we run the group homes, we provide services for our residents.
All right, so each one of your properties is purchased under a different LLC?
Correct, correct, but there will not be any veterans.
And is that?
We speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Because I can't, I can't hear you.
There will not be any veterans.
Any particular reason why?
Because we serve individuals with developmental disabilities only.
Okay.
There'll be no firemen either then.
There will be firemen.
Okay, I'm just thinking of all the veterans out there who have suffered injuries, and what's going on right now, and they need homes.
They do.
They do.
Yeah, so do individuals with disabilities.
Yep, because the VA is, well, never mind.
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
Don't get me started.
Yeah, it's, that, we, at our firm, we have a situation, and it is terrible, what the, unfortunately, there's not as much emphasis on VA housing as there is people with developmental disabilities, and both are needed, both are worthy causes, but we really need to do more for.
Just the opposite of the meeting I was in on Saturday, or the symposium I was in on Saturday on veterans' housing and suicide. But the one good thing, the suicide number is down from twenty-two a day to seventeen a day. We still need housing.
Yeah.
Well, I think we all concur that housing is an issue, development disabled is an issue. You're going to have supervision on-site, correct?
Correct.
And one person per shift, or what, how's that work?
Generally, in our other home, we have two people on per shift.
Twenty-four-seven?
Well, during the day, if they're home, yes, but generally, they're not home during the day, they either go to day programs, or work, or they're out of the house, but if they're in the house, it's staffed.
As I recall, you provide transportation, correct?
And we provide transportation, correct?
Okay, good, so.
Nobody would have a car, no?
No.
Yeah, so anything that comes and goes, a visitor, or it's arranged transportation or an employee?
Correct, or a parent or guardian that came to visit, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anybody else on the board have any questions on this, Ms. Mandelbaum?
Mr. Chairman, I did have an opportunity earlier today to read the materials set forth by Mr. Salvaghi in his letter, and in earlier correspondence, I do want to say that, you know, I do concur with his recitation of the law in terms of both federal and the MLUL Section sixty-six point one, the legislative history of sixty-six point one, he's correct on, so, I mean, this is, it's an argument that, you know, the legal foundation of the argument is appropriate and strong. I just thought the board ought to know that.
So basically, what we're saying is, the use is approved?
Well, under the, under the federal statute, I believe we have, I believe we are, under the, well, under the supremacy clause, yes, you know, the federal government has occupied the field with respect to this issue, and has determined that this, that this is essentially appro, it's not approvable, it is approved.
Yeah.
So it's a case, I have been mentioning this to Mr. Cole, it's really a case of federal preemption, I mean, I welcome the applicant's attorney to, correct me if he thinks I'm misstating anything, but, you know, my duty to the board is to make sure the law is recited accurately and properly, so I believe his recitation is correct.
Yeah, I think the federal government responds to situations where people, you know, still were reluctant, if you will, to allow this type of housing, the federal government with those Fair Housing Amendment Acts basically said, look, this is the way it's going to be, and a group home for people with developmental disabilities and head injuries, and now it's expanded to Alzheimer's and everything else, is the same as, you know, again, if any of you had purchased this property and were going to lease it out for investment, it would still be treated for purposes of zoning and everything else as a single-family residence, and that's what I think the federal government, and in turn, the state, is trying to achieve here, so that these group homes are not treated differently in the building permit process or, you know, the zoning process, to make it more cumbersome. And I think, as the chairman said, you know, it's, behind all of this is, and they don't use it in Section sixty-six, but it's inherently beneficial use, and we need to make sure, as a society, we do what we can to allow this type of arrangement to happen, and that's why I think I don't disagree with Mr. Givens's comments.
Anybody from the board have any more comments or any questions of Mr. Salvaghi or Ms. Mandelbaum?
Yeah, just real quickly, and I think I know the answer, I'm going to, just to put it on the record, so to speak, lawn mowing, garbage, snow plowing, all that's obviously done by you guys, or somebody.
Yes, we hire, yes.
Yeah, it's not on a routine basis, you know, that kind of thing, everything is taken care of.
Yes, yes.
Anybody else? Anybody from the audience have any comments or questions of the testimony given by the applicant?
Why don't you just stay here?
Dennis Sullivan, eight South Richards Avenue, several operational questions, and I'll preface my questions by reminding the board, I have a thirty-eight-year career in special education, so this population is extremely important to me. Ages of the clients?
Twenty-one and over.
Twenty-one and over, is there an upper age limit?
No.
Okay, gender?
It depends, we're not a co-ed house, that, 188 is most likely going to be an all-female house.
So it would be one gender only?
Correct.
Right, and then how would the clients be identified? How would you, how would you market, and how would you choose the people living there? Would they be referred through another agency?
They're referred, we already have people selected for the house, they're all females, and they, yeah, I don't know what your question is.
No, in other words, how would you choose, how would you select the four people?
So how we select our residents is very person-centered, and we try and get a good mix of people that get along well and have similar interests, so that's how we choose.
And then, in terms of once a resident moves in, are there yearly evaluations to make sure that that site is appropriate for them?
So, so there's a support coordination, support coordination agency through DDD, that, so every resident has a support coordinator, so we work, we have a team, an interdisciplinary team, that's comprised of us, the provider, the support coordinator, and the guardian, and we meet every year to go over the plan to ensure that our residents have everything that they need to live a full life, so we have, yes.
So if the site was not appropriate at any given time?
Correct.
There would be an option?
They wouldn't allow it, DDD wouldn't allow it, we're a licensed group home, so we are really, you know, heavily regulated.
Okay, and then the last comment, I would advise the operators, if this application is approved?
It's approved.
To have an open house, once it's open, to let the community feel that, you know, they're welcome, because years ago.
I think they said that on the other one.
Years ago, the group homes that I was involved in opening were hidden and anonymous, and it's only recently that, you know, organizations want to be part of the community, so I would just recommend that you not cloister yourself away.
We want to be part of the community, and we have, in our other house, eighty-seven West End Ave, we have a beautiful garden in the backyard that, you know, we have zucchini and, you know, all summer long, so we have barbecues, and, you know, we're not, we want to be part of the community, and that's the essence of the whole reason to have a single-family home, is to be in the community, you know, part of the community, so, you know, we would welcome the community support.
Yeah, thank the board and the applicant for your time.
And Dennis, hey Dennis, mayor, just so you know, it's not an application.
It's not, it's approved.
The use is approved.
The use is approved.
So, it's, they're not here as an application, there's no proofs or anything to go on the record, so it's just, it's a denial, they were denied for something here for an appeal.
It's an appeal.
An appeal, okay, but again, I just want to make sure that they open their doors to everybody.
I think they made that clear with the last two applications, that there would be an open house. Anyone else?
I'm Marge Sullivan, eight South Richards Avenue in Somerville. First, a question, because I think I'm a little confused now with that last comment, so the denial was for the use, not for variances?
There's no variances applied for.
Okay, will there be variances applied for?
No, they're conforming with.
Say again?
They're conforming, they have a couple minor things inside the house, as you said, going from five to four bedrooms and a few other things, but.
So there's no setback changes, no anything like that?
No, no.
Okay.
No changes.
All right, I have a letter on behalf of the Somerville Historic Advisory Committee that I would like to submit to the members of the zoning board, and basically, to cut to the chase, it's a statement that says, we are not objecting to the use, we are not objecting to adaptive reuse of any property, our interest is in the preservation of the areas of Somerville that have wonderful iconic historic homes, and we would like the zoning board to be aware that this is in an area where some very unique and historic architecture is located, and whatever deliberation comes before this board and/or any planning board where you would submit designs and things, we would, we would like the historic integrity of the property and the architecture to be respected, and for you to consider the impact on the overall neighborhood in approving any of those changes.
And it's an excellent comment, Wendy, are any exterior changes proposed?
No.
There's no ramps or anything like that?
No, and just to add, I totally, I completely understand, and our property And our property, 87 West End, has, you know, we tried to keep as much as possible the integrity of the house. And the same with this house, like the stained glass windows and everything, we put, we want to put a plexiglass over them so that, to keep that because they're so beautiful. So.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
And then my final question is, once this is approved as a group home, should the time ever come when it's no longer to be used as a group home? Nothing in this approval process would grandfather that as a use for multi-family or individual apartments or anything like that?
No, that would have to come before this board.
Correct.
That would really be a real change of views.
Yeah.
And variances would be required. The board would still have jurisdiction.
Okay. So, can I leave my letter on behalf of the committee?
Sure. Could you give this to the board secretary, please? And it'll be considered part of the record of this appeal. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Appreciate your taking the time to participate. Yes, ma'am?
Kate Potridge, 192 West High, it's the historic home next door. It's my mom's house. I've listened, you know, I'm not opposed to group homes. But I, I think there is an issue. And I get, you know, the, the legal history.
Could you speak up, please?
Sure, sure. I heard the lawyer say how, you know, according to the legal history, this should be treated as a single-family home, that it's inherently beneficial use. But the reality of the usage is not that, okay? As he said, if you're in this business, it's business, okay? And so, my mom has lived there 30 years, you know, her house is, was built in 1870. Takes a lot of love and care to take care of a historic building. The gardens, you know, the, the materials that a building like that's made of. My mom, myself, as a family, we have put a tremendous amount of effort, love, and care into that house. When they purchased the building, I mean, that's a, what, 140-year-old house? It's been a single-family residence that whole time. When they purchased the building, the family they bought it from had been there for 50 years. So, there's a lot of historic details in the building. It was a shared back garden. I hear what they're saying, but let me tell you my experience and my mom's experience. They came in, they started cutting down trees on the far side of, yes, their property, but that's the green veil between these two residential homes and a business. They just came in, started cutting the trees down. They started tearing things out of the building, I think, without building permits, is my, is my understanding. And I'm really, I've put a lot of love into this house myself. My mom, you know, is at an age where, like, I put that love in that house also for my mom so she can have her beautiful place to live as she gets older. And I'm really concerned, honestly. I'm concerned about how this will affect my family and my mom. And I think that's sort of the, the dissonance in this, let me keep it simple. You know, they're saying, "Treat this as a single-family home." The law says, "This is like a single-family home." But it's investors, it's a business, and they don't necessarily have this, I don't think they have the same care. The neighbors, you know, put it on the market at below what it was worth, and there was a bidding war. And my understanding is, a lot of young families bid on this beautiful old house. And they were outbid significantly by these investors. And I think, you know, that, that is not great for the neighborhood, that is not great for the neighbors, that is not great for the town. I mean, if that happens over and over again, you know, where's the limit? You guys say, "Well, the state says you can't say no to this. This is inherently beneficial use." But I think, you know, enough of that, and it changes the neighborhood, it changes the town. Anyways, so I am concerned about, I, my mom is out of the country. We're originally from Australia, she's in Australia, so she's not able to be here today. That's why I'm here representing my family. You know, we have concerns about the carers, are they going to be coming and going at night? There's a motion detector light there, you know? How much would they be changing things on the exterior? My, my thought is, you know, I'm not opposed to group homes, but this site that has been a single-family residence for 140 years, yes, it's mixed usage, professional and residential, but if you take another residential property off the, the block, then it's, you know, because there's less residents, actually has more impact than if it was all residences, actually. I'm also, in terms of this building being appropriate for this usage, it's a historic building. In front of the house, there are these large slate stones, it's a slate sidewalk. They've already said, "We're going to level the sidewalk." So, you're destroying the historic nature of the street. My understanding of even the landscaping is historic. The way it's set back, I believe relates to the landscape designers, the same style of Central Park, the Olmsted, you know? There's a lot of historic stuff going on with this. And it's like, okay, you say you can't say no, but what about other historic buildings? You know, where's the, the line? I guess is my question in the list, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience, any comments or questions? Anyone from the board?
Yeah, just one since the issue came up. You said they're going to level the front sidewalks, the slate sidewalks. You're not going to tear them out and pour concrete, you're going to level what's existing?
The bluestones?
Bluestones.
I know, I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
I don't think you're doing it.
It has to stay.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do. So, it's not, it'll, it'll be a safer sidewalk because it'll be leveled with the bluestones.
Yeah, I get it, I got the same problem, and we're always thinking, but, but you're not, it's not going to be concrete, it's just going to be reuse of what's there. Okay.
Yeah, those, that bluestone's expensive.
I do have a question about this. You said this is your third LLC in the town of Somerville as a group home, correct? I'm looking, I don't think you're the owner, but it sounds like you're the owners back there?
Well, not really, no, but we are part of the board group, the 87 West End.
For the record, your name?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
I'm the head of the agency.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you God.
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Jonathan Schwartz, S-C-H-W-A-R-T-Z.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Why don't you just start with your connection?
So, I'm the.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Okay, so I, I'm on the agency side. So, I provide, I'm the head of the agency, so we're, I'm part of the people that provide the support, but I'm more of, on the, on the business end of it than the day-to-day operations.
Who owns, who owns the LLCs?
So, we have a real estate partner. Bellagio Properties is the name of the.
And that's the attorney?
So, I represent Bellagio Property Management.
Okay. Do you own all three of those properties?
Not me personally.
Okay, then he should come forward and be sworn.
And why don't you explain the ownership of this specific property? That's an.
Let me, let me swear him in, please. You solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you God.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Alexander Casey, C-A-S-E-Y.
Okay. Mr. Savaji, do you have any other witnesses?
No. I didn't think I was going to.
No, I want them all sworn, this is.
This is it. So, Alex, the question, you know, Bellagio.
Sure, so I work for Bellagio Property Management, who owns the LLCs, all three of them.
All three of them? So, it's the same owner for all three?
Same owner, correct.
Okay. So, one of the things in, when Ms. Mandelbaum was here before, West End Avenue, that really was not handled well. Once you got the approval, the construction took a long time, the grass was very, very high, it was almost a foot and a half, two feet. And I said that when you came in here for the Cooper approval, you're not going to do the same thing and take that amount of time because it really was a detriment to the neighborhood, it's an eyesore. So, are, are we still on the same page here with this property?
So, 87 West, 87 West End Avenue you're referring to, that was a complete gut renovation, that was an extensive job, whereas this is just a very minor renovation on the interior.
Right.
So, during that process, though, the, the look, the visual of the property should remain unchanged?
Correct, yes.
I think the question also is, you're going to, you're going to have the same care of the property that will address any concerns such as those by the board member?
Yeah, yes.
All right. You know, no, no two-feet-high grass or any high grass or anything like this?
Correct, yes. We hope to have this fully done and operational within a few months, so it should.
So, where are you with the other property on High Street? Because it doesn't look like there's much going on over there.
We hopefully just satisfied the resolution compliance for that today, so we have been unable to do anything there yet.
Morgan, they just submitted the performance guarantee today.
For that, okay. By the way, West End Avenue looks beautiful. And as Mr. Sullivan said, if you do invite the neighborhood in and let them see it because that fence blocks everything, we have no idea what's going on behind the scenes there. All right? So, Cliff, I have a question for you. If, tonight, our, our job here is to either support the denial.
Or grant the appeal.
Or grant the appeal. If we, if we do not support, or if we do support the denial, they're still going to come back in a month or two, and then they would go through the same scenario as what we looked at before?
Well, conceivably, yes. I mean, depending on, I mean, I can't step into the shoes of Mr. Savaji. It's conceivable that it would be preferable that they would file an application and there would be something to go on. But what they could do is go to court.
Right.
There's, there's some significant case law on this.
And they could go to federal court.
But, but at the end of the day, though, they would get it because it's an improved use, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that, that's what I was saying previously. And I took the, I took the time, even though this was, came in kind of late, I reviewed the law and I did my own independent review of the decisional law and our MLUL and, of course, the federal law. And I concur with the conclusions made in that letter memorandum. It would be a, essentially, it's a, it's a question of, you know, under the Constitution, it's a supremacy clause issue. If the federal government has occupied the field, therefore, that is, that is the existing law. And, and certainly, New Jersey has also advanced that issue very significantly with Section 66.1 of the MLUL and also other decisions that have, that have interpreted the MLUL in terms of, you had discussed the inherently beneficial use. That is correct, but more importantly, the federal government has kind of occupied the field.
Right. So, so the question is, on the other properties that you have, are they all four bedrooms? They are. So, if the, if the law would change down the road, and maybe it will, that says, "Now you can have five," or "Now you can have six," or "Now you can convert the attic," would they need to come back in, in front of our board to get that approval?
In my opinion, yes, because it would be a change over what is originally approved. You know, I'll ask Mr. Savaji to either concur or not concur. I mean, I don't think that you essentially would get an amendment of your approval via statutory enactment.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I think we would, they would have to come back in. Are you planning on doing that, Mr. Savaji?
Wendy, the rules have been no more than four bedrooms for a while now.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I think adding a fifth or a sixth bedroom just probably logistically creates problems in terms of an operational supervision, correct?
Correct, we're only approved for four bedrooms. And then you have the paperwork.
No, 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 I saw the paperwork. The question was, let's assume that Congress or our legislature in its infinite wisdom decides that they change the law to make it easier for you to make five or six bedrooms. You know, would you essentially assume that, that you were approved de facto for a fifth or a sixth bedroom? I don't know that I agree with that, I think you'd have to come in here again.
We certainly, you know, it's an interesting question.
You'd have to come back in and get a building permit.
The first, the first two applications, because there were commercial uses that were converted to a group home. And Mr. Gibbons' resolutions said that you were granting an approval for four bedrooms.
Right.
This one's a little bit different because what we're saying is, it had been used as one of the residents, neighbors had said, for at least 50 years as a single family, we're just continuing that same, that same use. So, if somehow you went to more, it'd be no different than if we were all living there as, you know, as a family unit, and this office that we've set aside, created as an office, we said, "Hey, you know what? You know, we need another bedroom." I don't know if you would or you wouldn't. I, I think practically speaking, it's, it's, it's an interesting hypothetical. Wendy, I mean, I don't see the state going to.
I mean, I don't see the state going to one of four, but, for more than four, but if they did, I, if, I'm just saying hypothetically, I don't have any, I'm not thinking that this is going to go that way, but it's a five-bedroom. If it, if we're a single-family house, what, are you going to tell people that they can't have another child because you've already agreed to have four?
Well, that's a private home, I'm thinking about a group home.
No, I know, but this is considered a, a single-family home.
Yeah, DCA has put out a lot of guidance on this, especially to the code community.
Oh, no, I know, I was reviewing some of it today.
They, they said it's supposed to be looked at as a single-family home, just like any other single-family home.
Yeah, I mean, the fact of the matter.
I, I, I know, I'm just trying to be, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you know, respond to Morgan's question as much as possible.
I mean, clearly, you, you know, first of all, the DDD and this information's public record, right? All of the, the licensing, you'd have to get building permits. I mean, this could not happen in the dead of night without, you know, you guys knowing about it.
You'd have to get, I was going to say, you'd have to get administrative approval.
Yeah, so.
You guys just couldn't one day just, just add another thing in there because frankly, we'd be calling, we'd be calling the DCA or the DDD.
So, we're, so we're a licensed group home, we, right? So, we're licensed. When they give us the approval, they come out every year to ensure that everything is appropriate, everything is exactly the way it's supposed to be, what we were approved for. So, you know, we are, we have to live up to that expectation of DDD, or they could take our license. So, we can't just do whatever we want to do. We can't just let the property go to nothing, and we, we're not allowed to do that because, and they come out every single year.
No, no, no. Morgan, are you, was that response satisfactory to you? Okay, I, I, I just, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page with this.
Thank you.
Good? Yeah, we did. Yes. Please come forward and address the microphone.
Can we sit down?
If you gentlemen may need to answer questions, stick around, please, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Chris Cutler, 64 Mountain Avenue. My first comment is, I'm actually, you know, pleased to hear a group home actually paying taxes. That's, you know, I think that's, all, all the group homes in town should pay taxes, and that, that's really good. I would just strongly recommend you have much better management of your relationships with your relationships with your neighbors. And you've had some pretty adversarial contacts with your neighbors, not you personally, but shouting matches, plowing through gardens, just, and, and when that sort of thing happens, people think you're going to wreck the house, you're going to turn it into some ugly place, and, and people's fears take over, and you get a turnout like this. And I would just say that you, you should work on that.
So, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, I, obviously you don't, because if you knew, you would never let it happen.
No, I was over there, I was over there. Every time that there was a disagreement, Jonathan and I would go over there because we work at 87 West End Ave., so we, there was no plowing through. So, I, I'm confused with that.
Okay, okay, well, hearsay, hearsay then. Okay, anyway, I, I also very much want to see the home, a home's historical character preserved, and I would like you to be welcome to the neighborhood if you're approved, so, you know? So, those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience have any question, comment? Anyone else in the audience have any questions, comments? One gentleman. And one lady.
Did you sneak in, Mr. Willard?
That's good.
We're in physical therapy. My name is Harold Willard, I'm at forty-four North Bedore Street. I'm a disabled veteran and I live in Somerville. I've met you before, ma'am, when you were building the Weston Avenue place. And my question is this, is that, I see, I, I just found out today that you're a big corporation here. You, you are, I'd like to know, are you, are you planning on building more homes in Somerville like this? I mean, I'd like to know that, because I think it might be like, um, important for us to realize whether or not you're planning on expanding besides this one on, uh, I was, uh, Mountain Avenue.
I mean, we are, we are considering, you know, other houses, definitely. I don't know about in Somerville, but possibly, yes.
Just for the record, this isn't an application.
Yeah, no.
This is an appeal.
Okay, so...
So there's no, there's no, if it's approved or not approved, this is an appeal of a decision by the zoning officer. So there isn't any proofs or anything...
And there won't be any conditions of a decision.
No conditions, there's nothing else, then yes, she was right, no, she was wrong.
Hi, Kate Partridge, one ninety-two West High again. I'll try to make it brief.
Please speak into the mic.
Okay, is that good, you hear?
That's better.
It just seems like a bit of a shell game. Like, I, I get the law that would, that goes back in terms of making facilities like this available, people. I'm totally, I'm not opposed to that at all. But again, I, my concern is about the site, the building, where this is happening. Inherent beneficial use, okay? I think, I, I, I get the idea of that, but on this location, I don't think that's true, actually.
Here's the problem, we don't have any say in that.
Well, you, this is an appeal, right?
This is an appeal of a decision that the zoning officer made on certain aspects of their application. They're, they're approved, they're gonna be there. There's some things that we need to work out, and we, um, the zoning officer, um, denied it. Denied some of the things that has to come, and they've come before us to overrule or sustain.
I understand that, but I still think it's...
There's an application, we can put conditions on an application, but this isn't an application, so...
I, I, I understand that, but I still think in, you know, just letting the light shine in, in this process, I think the context is still important. To me, it is like a shell game, because, and I think this also relates to some of the difficult interactions my mom has had with some of the people here. Because who are the owners here, okay? So there's the organization that runs the group home, um, and then there's Bellagio Properties, right? And then there's some LLCs. Who is actually the owner? Who brought the money to this equation and bought this property? I don't think we even know that, I would like to know. Who's the owner? Who's the owner of Bellagio Properties?
Actually, that's something for us to really find out past this point.
I think it is significant as context, because if it is more about investment, it affects the motivation, okay? It affects the motivation if you come in and start gutting a historic property or how you treat the neighbors in an interaction. Sure, we want beneficial use, but I think that is part of the problem. You know, that if you have investors, and we don't really know who the investors are, how do you interact? It's different if it really was a single-family home and a family had bought the property and we were having difficulty working something out with where the fence line is, whatever. You'd interact with that person, but it's not that simple.
That information would be on file in Borough Hall.
Right, it's not that simple. And I think that there's a conflict there between the law that says, this is a single-family home, treat it this way, and business people who are making money, and they're motivated by the investment nature of it. So I, like, the slate sidewalks, I, uh, things like that, I'm concerned. They threw down rucksolt, like, that's not good for a hundred-and-fifty-year-old stone, things like that. If, some of these families that tried to get this house, you know, it takes a lot of love to take care of a hundred-and-forty-year-old house. In fact, my mom told me that there's a property at the other end of Somerville that was converted like this, and that business found that it was too expensive to do all the maintenance and the things you have to do for a hundred-and-forty-year-old house or whatever. And they, they abandoned it, I believe it's still sitting there empty, okay? So I, I, I just add this as context, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can just make a comment, I think that your first hearing that there's some abrasiveness in the neighborhood, just rumor, we're all, we all live in town, we all hear different things. It's your contractors that were very abrasive. So if you can smooth that over with the neighbors, I think that would go a long way. And they probably, with, doing a lot of construction and a lot of things without permits, as you know, rumors circulate very, very quickly, so that's what you're up against.
In my opinion, sitting up here over the last several years, is that inherently beneficial use is used too much. We have no say on how many group homes or cell towers or others, uh, that we can put in. And of the five, five-hundred-and-sixty-four municipalities in this state, I think we all have that problem, where they just come in and say, it's inherently beneficial use, I can put these cell towers anywhere I want. And we've got, we've had it here. The mayor and other members, how many group homes do we have? Well, this is approved, but how many, going forward, how many more will the state allow? Because it does, how, we are the county seat, we do offer a lot of services in, in this county and in, in this state. But how many is too many? And that's a question that, uh, I guess the League of Municipalities and NJPO are gonna have to deal with over, in the future, long after I'm gone. So that you don't misunderstand, this is going through, it's already approved, we have no choice. But we wanted to get this out here because of, uh, her, the appeal. We have two choices, we can override the appeal or sustain the appeal. And that's where we're about, we're at.
What does that, what does that actually gi- give us? I mean, if we over, you know, we deny it or override it, what's, what's the benefits?
It'll go to Superior Court and it'll be overturned.
I mean, we're, we're tied, there's nothing, that's it.
Well, at least we got the stuff out here for the, for the public, so that they know. And as Dennis said, have an open house, get out there and, and get to know who the people are who are living there. We had that situation, Rich, remember, years ago on Grant Avenue? Okay, and of all the, uh, the houses in town, the group homes in town, that's the only one I've heard of any problems with. Yes, and there wasn't management problem.
I think that's back in private hands.
And, and by the way, just, I mean, so if, if the zoning officer's decision is overturned, I mean, the building permit process will continue to play itself out. There's, you know, the work that would be done, be inspected. I mean, it's not like we're able to, you know, exempt ourselves from any borough control. That's quite, quite contrived. So you, you guys will still have, uh, you know, a part to play in this, uh, in the interior work that's gonna be done. And, and if there's any other work that would come along later on, you know, you still have to go through the building permit process. Inherently beneficial use doesn't give you a get-out-of-jail-free card for everything.
No, I think the, I think the problem is with the residents, and me included, is, um, they're tired of seeing the old homes go away. And, and it might look the same, but a business is, does not care about that house. Doesn't, it cares about the business. And they just come into these towns and look for the biggest homes, which happen to be these beautiful old homes. So it's a business, like, like she said, they don't care about that house. They don't, and it's like, not the same way, so if someone bought that house and, and raised a family in that house, they love that house. This business is just looking for a big house.
I would ask you to come look, come to our eighty-seven West End Avenue and look at our house.
I live behind it.
And, and what do you think?
It's beautiful.
Thank you.
But...
And you know what, we take care of our residents and their people.
But what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, it's changed, it's not, it's not the same house. It's three floors...
No, I'm glad it's not the same house, it's beautiful. It wasn't beautiful before.
It's no longer historical.
It was falling down.
I'm just saying, that's what's, that's why the residents get upset, because it's like, they don't feel...
The one eighty-eight is not falling down.
They live next to these houses, the business owners don't. They don't live in the town, they don't live on that street, they do. So they get upset when they see, they think they, I'm just saying, that's why they get, bleh. You have to understand that they live in this, you know, they're like, they think they're being, oh, man, that's why you should just, I mean, there's nothing we can do, it's gonna happen, but...
I understand.
We just have to, you know, let them know that, I get it. I get it.
Art? Yeah? Mr. Chairman, someone raise their hand? Yes, I saw that, come on up.
Hi, I'm Margaret Phillips, sixty-four Mountain Avenue. Um, I just wanna, this is a business, and as a resident of the town, I'm very upset that they were able to come in and outbid families that could live there. And I worry about the future of the town, if that's gonna happen over and over and over again. They have more resources than a family who could've paid full price for the house but got outbid by a business. So just, this, I just want to let you know what the residents are thinking. Okay, thank you.
Can I say something to that? So, so, you know what, when DDD does a site search, they, they, they do not, we can't have too many houses in one area, they, they do not allow that. So, think about, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there. They don't, they won't just approve everything anywhere, just because we feel like it. And it's more than just a business, it's, we're people, they're people. And that's what we created, a home for these people, and that's what we do. And I can't speak to other companies that, you know, let people live in squalor. We don't do that, and we've proven that by eighty-seven West End Ave. We have pride, sorry, but...
Yeah, I can understand it, there's, there are other businesses in that neighborhood. It's just that this is a different type of business. You've got funeral homes, you've got doctor's offices, uh...
Dentists.
Dentist, um, Silo used to be there, engineering, but it's, it's a different type of, of business. And it's a twenty-four-hour business. As far as them outbidding, uh, a family, it, it happens all the time.
Art?
Yeah, Rich?
I think we're, we're wandering way off of stage here, but I, now, I kinda have to talk about something. I live pretty close to that neighborhood, and I'm one of the owners of one of these eighteen-ninety houses. And trust me, you probably know, you, you spend your life and soul trying to keep a thing from falling down. There's nothing but a big pile of wood looking to fall, that's, that's all you do. You, you finish on the back door, the front door falls off. I mean, that's just the nature of these places. If they have the wherewithal to keep this thing together and keep the facade and probably the interior looking appropriately to preserve it, we're kind of a winner. Particularly if the home is run the way I, I see your other ones being run. So I don't, I, there is a downside because you won't have a family there, but a lot of families today can't afford or don't wanna tackle a large Victorian or pre-Victorian house because it's, it's, they're a bear. We talked about the sidewalks out front, I've been fighting my front sidewalk, it's trying to go to China. You know, and, and I'm keeping the sutphins in business, just coming to level the thing. So, you know, it's, it's...
You don't want a certain person with the initials PD.
Right, exactly.
Know how he feels about the new stone.
So, so I think, I think in a lot of ways, this may preserve that building. I, I would hope it would, and preserve the facade of the neighborhood. And my Memorial Day parade, and when the bike races go, it's a family. You know, I think that is what we can hope for. We can't, we can't say no, we don't wanna get into an appeal process, but this might just be a good deal right now, and I think we should try to make it work.
Okay, is that it? Anybody else? Okay, will somebody want to close the public portion or move?
Second.
Can I just say one last comment? Again, Kate Partridge, one ninety-two West High. Um, I wanted to make this comment because you guys are the zoning board, and I, I just think this is a good discussion also, besides how it affects my family. It wasn't one family that tried to bid on this house, it was a bunch of families, is my understanding. Maybe six, is, is my memory, okay? And they outbid them vastly, which, I mean, the neighbors that lived there before had promised us, we'll get you good neighbors, and, and we believed that, it was just aural, you know? But if investors come in and outbid by, I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars or something, it's pretty hard to say no to that, okay? And my understanding of High Street is, you know, I know that when the mall was built and the town went through tough times, especially Main Street, a lot of those big old Victorian houses were not being maintained well. And I believe that is when the zoning changed, that it became professional residential. And at that time, that was a good way to preserve those old buildings. And it does take a lot of work and love and care and money to preserve a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty-year-old building. But times have changed. Main Street is doing very well, in fact, the mall is not doing so well these days. So inherent beneficial use, this is a thing. There's a lot of young families trying to move to Somerville right now. They snap up these old houses and they fix them up, they make them beautiful, they fix up the gardens. It's a different time. Being able to be in a house one block from the Main Street, which is now vibrant, it makes a lot of sense, very attractive. So I also question, I mean, besides whether this was the best change in use for this property, okay? And its historic nature, and it's been a residence for, I think, a hundred-and-forty years, is what I said. I question actually the zoning of High Street. To me, it would make more sense for those business, the, the, the Victorians that were converted into professional spots back in the eighties or whenever it was, maybe it made sense then. But today, so much is online, and then with the pandemic, people don't need office space. So there's a lot of vacancies in those businesses. In fact, there's a property across the street from my mom's house that was, I believe, supposed to become a dental office, it sat there vacant since the pandemic. You know, and I think it's more about investment. It would make more sense to me if those vacant business properties were being converted back into residential, instead of taking this beautiful, a hundred-and-forty-year-old residential house and converting it. It is a business, I mean, yes, people living there...
It is a residence.
It is a residence and it is a business.
It's a residence, though, it's a residence where people, wonderful people live and thrive as a family.
I have, I've had total respect for that, but as your lawyer said, when you're in this business...
As far as who buys it, this board has no control over it. The mayor and council have no control, the planning board has no control.
I, I get that.
And this board, several years ago, recognized the fact that the, uh, business model in the POR zone has changed. And we jumped on that, allowing conversions from offices to residential because of the glut of office space.
I think that would make more sense at this point, yeah. Because I...
And we're in a forefront.
Good, good, because I think maybe in the past, you were in danger of those properties deteriorating. I don't think that's the case anymore, when you have six families trying to get into that place. And maybe they're historic preservationists and they would've lovingly taken care of it, you know? I, I think it's about investments, honestly. And, and I, I get the humane nature of the organization, I respect that. But my, my fear is about what is beneath that, thank you.
Is that it? Nobody else? Yes?
Just my final word on this, uh, gracious people. I keep hearing, I mean, I got a little age on myself, okay? And I'm a disabled, my Harold Willard, uh, forty-four North Bedore Street, okay? My question is, I keep hearing that, oh, it's a family, it's a fam... But you mean to tell me that there's not profit being made off of this?
Of course.
Okay, that's all I wanna know. So it is a profit-driven organization and entity, am I correct?
So is a, so is a hospital.
John Silo, it's business. And we're in a situation of NIMBY, not in my backyard, and it's universal. But five hundred and sixty-four municipalities are gonna have to get together at either the NJPO meetings or, uh, the League of Municipalities and talk with their representatives and say inherently beneficial use needs to have a cap. And that cap will be predicated on the individual plans. I know Belmar is going through a thing with, um, uh, cell towers. Yeah, inherently beneficial, right on the main drag. And we've had, how many applications for, for cell towers here? Half a dozen that we voted on over the years? How many? So, but it's going through. It's up to this board to say whether or not we're gonna override, uh, the zoning officer or sustain what the zoning officer did, and it would be on them from there. And that's where we're at. Would someone like to close the public?
Second.
Move the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ward, what's your favor?
Uh, yeah, I think it's, it'd make a motion to overturn the, the zoning officer.
Second.
And move, move the second. So an affirmative vote would be to overturn, uh, the zoning officer's decision. Okay? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Adair?
Yes.
Ed Allot?
Yes.
Roberta Carpenitz?
Yes.
Morgan McLaughlin?
Yes.
Rich O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Wadimski?
Yes.
John Flores?
Yes.
Eric Alvarez?
Yes. Thank you very much, guys. We appreciate it.
I will prepare a resolution memorializing the board's decision. Uh, Mr. Salvagie, I'll coordinate that with your office.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, what do we have, uh?
Special meeting.
Special meeting. Yeah, talking about special meeting.
Bell Ave?
Yeah.
Well, Mike, have they updated their, their plans yet?
No.
No.
So how can we?
I just, uh, they reached out to me, I believe, on Monday or Tuesday, saying that they'll have plans for me on Friday, which if they're submitted by Friday, we'll give them the ten days before the special meeting for them to be reviewed by the board.
Well, wait a minute, couldn't I get them done in ten days?
No.
I think.
No, I, my understanding was there was a special meeting to, to talk, have the architect come in and go over affordable housing.
The licensed architect.
Not the revised, right, the licensed architect, not the revised plans. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was, when, uh, Mr. O'Grannick reached out to me, that was his original request, was to have the architects, um, testify and then also speak about affordable housing.
Wait.
Yeah, but that's borderline bifurcation, because they wanna deal with the use and they don't wanna do, deal with the site plan. And we haven't bifurcated, uh, an application.
We haven't approved the bifurcation, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
And we haven't approved the bifurcation, so.
I don't, I don't think we should approve a special meeting until we have the application back in.
Yeah.
Give me the full packet.
If they wanna bring their architect in to complete their prior application for whatever purpose, that's different. But if they're bringing it in to talk about that and something else, that's.
That's a waste, a waste of time.
That would be the limitation of their presentation would simply be to, uh, have a qualified New Jersey architect uh, testify as to what their plans are.
The existing plan that we already have.
Yes.
Yeah.
The person who was disqualified at the last meeting just necessitated this, but we're not interested in having them lard on uh, other things onto the application. That, that can be done at a regular meeting.
After we get the application.
That is correct.
No, they're talking about the Granite Building.
Granite Building, that's all over the place.
And honestly, the Granite Building, how many times has it been on our agenda? They've pulled? Four?
It's been different people all the time.
Two to my knowledge, as long as I've been here.
We had the apartments, and the planning board had a, a conceptual for townhouses.
To tear it all down.
And, uh, a fifth floor.
So we're, we're messing right now.
So, no.
No.
They, uh, the applicant's attorney requested a continuance on the Grant's Building. And I think the email or correspondence said they were gonna reevaluate the first, the ground floor use. So if they're gonna reevaluate, it becomes a permitted use. It's not in front of this board.
Right.
I think if they are before a board, that we should be warning them next time they pull the application, we're tossing it.
Well, that's.
They keep, they keep making.
Let them pull it with prejudice.
Yeah, because it's, they keep putting it on the agenda and they keep pulling, and there's other people waiting to get before the board.
Right.
And it's pushing things way out.
Yeah.
So I think they should be warned that if you're coming, if you're gonna put it back on the agenda, then if you don't show up, it's getting tossed.
And that we're not, and that we're not gonna entertain any kind of automatic approval. I mean, they're, they're subject to the rules, and if push comes to shove, we can deny it. Simply deny it without prejudice.
Yeah.
Who's the attorney on Grant's again? I'm sorry.
Oh, O'Grannick.
Okay.
It's not like we're not gonna see him anytime soon.
No, no, I know, but he's gotta, he's gotta play by, he's gotta play by the rules, too.
I do believe O'Grannick, Michael, has given, uh, the board, uh, the time to act through April for both applications. Is that right, Ryan?
I'd have to double check, but I believe so, yes.
Yeah, so either he grants the extension, or the board's gonna have to dismiss this at the next meeting, or both, or one or both, because that's, the next meeting's one, one meeting before the end of April, and we have to check that date. Uh, so I think it's back to the question of, does the board want to continue applications for years?
No.
That's what's happening with Grant's. At, at some point in Cliff chime in.
Well, because it, it keeps jumping the line, and then there's people waiting to get before the board.
Right.
The issue, the issue is if it's screwing up everything.
Screwing up everything.
Well, it's blocking our agendas, because we've had, we've, we've got a lot of these things right now where,
Right.
you know, we're holding off for them and, 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 you know.
It's not like they have twenty days. They tell us like two days before.
Right.
Right, so if the board would dismiss the applications, be without prejudice, so you come back in.
That is, it's dismissed without prejudice.
But the, the, the challenge I'm having is keeping up with the waivers to time to act, for this fear of a default approval. This is going so long that I'm losing track of what.
A lot of applicants do that.
That's what I'm worried about.
Well, that's why I'm saying, if we're, if, if they wanna have a special meeting to complete their prior testimony, to finish their case, that way, okay, game over. That one's done.
Yeah, I don't think they wanna do that.
But that's Bell, that's Bell Avenue. That's not.
Well, it's, it's Bell Avenue, but it, it, both of them are in the same boat.
Same boat.
Both have two applications that have been in the board's schedule for over a year, both of them.
Well, I know.
I'm talking almost two years.
Yeah.
On Granite's, I think, uh, the former attorney, Peter Lanford, I think he had his health condition. It was October or September of oh-three, twenty, oh-three, twenty, two thousand.
Well, we're in pending litigation with Bell Avenue, too, so that's a little bit of a different animal. I don't wanna, I.
The other thing is to explain like the newer members, so if something falls through the cracks, it gets this default approval.
I know what it, yeah.
And we don't want that to happen, because they keep playing this game of, hey, we're getting on the agenda, and then we pull it off, and get on the agenda, oh, we're not ready.
Yeah, generally speaking.
It's like this game that, hey, no more.
Generally speaking, the board has a hundred and twenty days to act and chime in if, once the application is deemed complete.
And if they don't, the board doesn't act, it's approved.
Yeah, so normally you say, what's the big deal, Cole? We got a schedule, we're good. The problem we're having is not control here. The day of the meeting, like one thirty-one, they ask for a continuance. Now, now I'm thinking clock, because all of a sudden, we're good.
Yeah, well, as long as they grant us the extension of time.
If we don't get the extension, the problem is that we meet once a month, so is that time fall before the next meeting?
Well, maybe Grant should be scheduled for dismissal.
I think, that's what I think.
Yeah.
No, sounds good to me.
It's the, the board would have to vote on whether to dismiss the application.
Right, I, you can't just do it on my fiat. It would have to be.
We have to notice them that we're gonna do that, right?
No, I don't think so. I think it's just a, I think it's a roll call on that for dismissal.
Exactly. It would be, it would be a roll call for dismissal, yes.
Yeah, put it on our agenda.
They have to put it on the agenda for next.
Yes, it has to be agendized.
Yeah, I think that should be on the next agenda.
Please.
And I'll follow up with, with Ryan to make sure we're, that we have the extensions.
We're gonna say we're done.
If you're having trouble, Ryan, well, I, I think tonight, uh, just reinforce the position we've been taking for the last couple of years that the zoning officers should be at these meetings.
It's a shame we did an appeal and she wasn't here.
Yeah.
So, not to be the dead horse, but are we meeting on April second, or are we not?
That horse is out of pasture. Nope.
Who's the winner in this? We are, my friend.
Okay, so we will not be meeting April two. All right, good.
And we'll get the agenda for dismissal and the agenda for Grant's, uh, the sheriff's is actually called. And, and I'll, we'll check the timeframes on all the applications, and if we don't get an extension or an O'Grannick for Bell, then we're gonna have to discuss what we're doing there. What I'm, what I'm saying is.
Yeah, I don't wanna, well, listen, listen, right now, they understand they're in litigation, too, so that guy should come and offer his testimony. I mean, they're the ones who are, they're, they're the ones that screwed up, so, I mean, I hate to say it so bluntly, but, you know, let them come in.
Let me say it for you.
No, no, it's all right. Ri- Rich, I usually don't get this annoyed, but I, I was annoyed with the way they handled that by bringing in an uncertified, out-of-state architect, knowing what the rules were.
But they should complete their case.
So, you know, tell them to put their case in.
Yeah.
Well, we have a full agenda for the next meeting, so we're gonna, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, we have the one oh-six vets.
Finally?
Yes. And the question is, uh, we're gonna act the, if we don't get the extension, then we're gonna have to act on both of them in some regard.
That too.
Because my understanding is the extension for Bell runs out April. I think it's the end of April.
And if for some reason, as I said, if there's any issue with that, please let me know, because uh, dismissal of that application would certainly not look good in the eyes of the court. And, and not, not necessarily because of us, but, you know, uh, th- th- this matter, this matter has really gone on and on and on.
Then why don't we just go ahead and schedule them to complete their case, even if it's a special meeting? Come in, finish your case.
Well, wasn't that the idea of the special meeting? No, but.
I'm not sure, but that's what.
I think it was, but I think they're changing their application.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
They wanna complete their case for thirty-eight, and now they wanna come before us with thirty-five? I don't know.
I don't know either, but that's, that's what.
That's the thing. We're not the planning board. We can't deal with conceptuals.
We should just blow the whistle, here's the date, finish your case.
And, and, and barg- bargaining in the course of the meeting is certainly not the board's, uh, it's not the board's duty. And I know we do it once in a while, but, and I don't mean bargain, I don't even wanna say that on the record, but, because we don't. But the thing is, is that if an applicant, if an applicant has dragged its feet enough, you know, the, 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 the rules do provide us with, uh, with, with, with recourse. Um, and I am a little concerned about the attorney for the, for Bell Avenue. I mean, you know, there is certainly a, uh, a, you know, a duty on them to prosecute the application with due diligence.
Um, we should call them on that without, you know, if they wanna pull that out and put another application in, that's their, their business, but let's finish what's here or let them withdraw it.
Can I put them on for the next meeting?
Yeah, let's finish it.
With, with one oh-six vets, that's the abandoned houses down there?
We have one oh-six, which is the two-family of, the proposed two-family on that, that lot that's very small, right there. And I think we have the, we have Fifty Division Verizon cell tower for an appeal on the cell towers for co-mingling, co-whatever it is called.
Yeah, it's, it's another, it's another federal statute issue.
Uh, so we have those two right now, but I, I agree, there's, there's confusion exactly what Bell's gonna be proposing.
But they have something.
I have emails showing concepts that we don't have any plans.
You know, we're, we're not confused. They didn't finish their case. They should come in and finish it, or they should withdraw it. We don't have to think about anything else.
I, I agree with you. I mean.
You know, finish up or go away. You know, let's, let's get this done.
So who conveys that to Bell?
We put it in a bottle and throw it.
I, but I, I'll check the dates.
I, I can certainly, I, I, and you can bring me in on it, as I just said to Ryan, you can bring me in on it, because this is silly. This has been going on for over two and a half years.
Hey, no, Mike, you shouldn't be doing it. Should be the planner or Ryan.
So the question is, so the question is.
There you go, Ryan. Tomorrow, man. Good on that.
If they're gonna, as, as Rich said, if they're gonna finish their case, the board will entertain a special meeting in first beat of May. April's booked. It'd be the first Wednesday of May, if everybody's available, to complete the case.
And we should at least know what they're going.
Unless they, right, unless they issued a, I think, time extension, the board wants to push this to June, July, August to finish the case, whatever it is, based on the agenda.
But they should not come in with another application while this thing is still going on.
Right. They, they, they should come, they should prosecute the existing application.
Or withdraw it.
Which is what they already saw.
Or withdraw it. All right, so we'll have direction at the next meeting on what exactly is happening here in terms of Bell. Are they gonna withdraw it? What exactly, clear direction of what they're asking for, a special meeting for exactly what?
Let's get it done or go on.
We'll see about the timelines on these applications in the next meeting, and.
Let me say something. If they don't wanna prosecute, continue to prosecute the initial application, they should be advised that they should dismiss it and file a new application. I mean, it's plain and simple. I mean, I've seen litigation where applicants, and this especially happens with residential developers, and we already say it, where, you know, they file two or three applications pending at the same time, and why judges, you know, why, judges certainly don't like it, but why boards tolerate it is beyond me.
So Cliff, why don't you do it? Let's, let's move on.
Yeah, let's just.
Right?
Let them finish prosecuting this application. If they wanna prosecute a different, if they wanna file a different application, then dismiss this. Period.
The bottom line is we'll get closure on this by next meeting of the board.
Move on, okay.
Either we're gonna act on dismissing and the plan is for sheriff's.
No, no, I know, I'm just, you know, I, 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 you know how I feel about these things. I, 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 most applicants are better, better, uh, you know, I don't wanna say this is bad intention, but it just, we've had issues with this applicant going back to tw- two thousand twenty-three.
So let's, let's just hit it down, and let's move on.
Yeah, let's just do it.
Because this is wasting our time.
Yeah, they sure are.
The direction is, we're gonna put on the agenda to dismiss sheriff's. That's the Grant's.
The Grant's Building.
The next meeting.
Okay.
And then we're gonna get definitive direction for the next meeting for the board to consider what the applicant is proposing.
Right.
Are they gonna, Bell, are they gonna finish the case? Are they gonna drop the case, submit something else? And Cliff, are you gonna?
And write us another letter to tell us they're gonna sue us and they would, you know, I, I, I.
Why are we?
Why can't they be able to sue us? Because they're the ones that would not withdrew it, but they're the ones that want that.
I know, but, you know, they, they have had a succession of, I mean, I, at a certain point, I mean, I knew some of the attorneys who handled this. Most of them are pretty reputable, but I just think this applicant doesn't.
Well, let's just tell them, finish up and move on.
Okay.
Make a motion for a German.
Well, we'll take some action. One way or another, we'll take action next meeting on these two applications.
Yeah, sounds good to me. So, move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
This went, uh, Morgan, Morgan, uh, Morgan.